Okay. Welcome, everybody, to our Tuesday, August sixteenth Regular Council Meeting here at City Hall. It is seven o'clock and we are going to start off with our invocation given by Councilmember Dunn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together to listen and to speak in a place that we call home. Please, please inspire courage and support to the members of our community who have endured loss for the weather condition that we've endured in the past week. And lift up our first responders for all that they do for the people in our community.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
All right. All right, we'll call the meeting to order here. And we will start with a roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
President.
Hey, Councilmember Kurtz.
President.
Mayor Protem Folier. Councilmember Spencer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Solberg.
Here.
Hey, do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Van Orman? Well, Mayor Protem plays juggles with his microphone.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Van Orman.
Is your microphone on?
It is.
It's not registering. Okay, we have a first motion by Councilmember Solberg.
Second.
But did you push the with the motion button?
Kelsey, are we trying to, are we not doing that tonight or are we? Okay, okay, great, because I know we're having difficulties for it. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Cargill in a sec. Sorry, motion by Councilmember Solberg, a second by Councilmember Cargill. Any, any discussion? All right, not seeing here, seeing or hearing any, please raise your hand and say aye if you approve.
Aye.
All right, and we have, oh, sorry. Do we have, do we have that up? We don't have it on the screen, Kelsey. Sorry for those who are, who are joining remotely and those here, we're still getting used to our iLegislate taking, making motions and seconds and voting online. Oh, so Councilmember Cargill can't hit the second button because he's remote, so somebody else. There we go. Didn't, did it take? It should be.
Ding.
It's, Kelsey didn't register?
I can fill in the seconds if Councilmember Cargill.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. All right, go ahead and hit your votes. I'm missing a couple. There we go. All right. And yes. Yeah, so, and he raised his hand, so I guess for Councilmember Cargill. Hope you don't mind me doing that for you there. Okay, so moving on, so as we, as we struggle with some of this, all right, agenda approval.
If again, Mayor, at this time, Council would like to add a section to our executive session. So therefore, I'd like to make a motion to add to our executive session per RCW four.
Did you say two? Oh, I thought you said two hour.
Oh, no, no.
Hours.
I would never do that. RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one C regarding real estate.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. You want me to hit the motion button? Did you do it for me? Do it. Sweet.
Okay, to hit a second on that, Kelsey?
Do we need to wait for the second until you write the motion in? Is that what we figured out? Do you want me to go ahead, Kelsey? Okay, all right, so through motion, second to add executive session to item nineteen, any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please, oh, there you go. Indicate yes or no on your screen, and I see Councilmember Cargill's hand up. So any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. All right, so that our amended agenda.
This time, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Perfect, we have a second.
Oh, second.
Okay. A second by Councilmember Solberg. Any session? All right, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, I see Councilmember Cargill's hand up as well. All right, motion passes six zero. All right, on to citizen comments. Now we get into the meat of things here. All right, so if you wish to provide oral public comments during the council meeting, you may do so here in person at City Hall or virtually being Zoom. Via Zoom, if you wish to speak in person, we do have the yellow forms over by the entryway table. You fill that, fill that out and get it to me. That'd be great. Looks like I've got one. And if you're on Zoom and would like to make a citizen comment, please send a message to Todd Henderson in the chat feature on Zoom, and he will let me know that you're, you'll be speaking. Just a reminder, each person has up to three minutes. You'll, you will see the countdown timer. And this is definitely citizen comments. If there needs to be a response, we will make sure that we have your contact information, so we can get back to you with the appropriate information. So we will start out here in person. Werner O'Quinn. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Werner O'Quinn. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about fastest growing sport in the United States right now, pickleball. And I have to say, if you do play or don't play, you've seen people that do or talk to somebody that does. It is growing that fast. Orchard Park, wonderful setup right now with eight courts. But it's starting to get so much play that the youth tennis play is pushing pickleball guys out, pickleball players out. And it's time for us to start looking at some permanent courts for pickleball. And I know it's expensive proposition, but I just like to get that out there. I know other people have talked to different members of the council about it. But it's a it's a pretty extensive group of people playing. Right now, you're getting sixteen to twenty people playing in the mornings. They start at five thirty in the morning. And then in the evening, there's another group of sixteen that come out and play. And that's just at Orchard Park, not counting Rocky Hill. So, and two of the courts at Rocky Hill are not play the way they're set up. They've cut the corners at forty-five degrees, so two of the courts can't, you can't play on. So those don't get use. So I'm just putting a pitch out here, putting the idea out. And with time, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more people talking to you. So thank you very much for your time.
No, thanks for coming. I hear, I hear this a lot at the farmer's market as well.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. It doesn't look like we have anybody else here in person. Todd, do you have anybody from Zoom who'd like to make a comment? Okay, all right, just remember, there will be another opportunity for citizen comments near the end of the meeting. All right, we will move on to announcements proclamation special presentation. So tonight, we have with us Sam Abrams from Liberty Launch Academy. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Welcome here. I'm going to share my screen on Zoom and you'll be able to see it up here. Is it good now, Todd? It is, here we go. Okay. Just coming from work, put in ten hour day, so I can empathize probably with you as well that you put in a long day. Just to introduce myself, my mom and dad bought here in nineteen seventy-six. My mom still lives in the house I grew up in. Before most of this was developed, before Pavilion Park was here, I rubbed bikes in the weeds there. This is home for me. I graduated from CV in nineteen ninety-eight, same class as Chris Cargill. I moved away for twenty years to disrupt education and that's what I've been doing for the last long, long time. And I'm back here to disrupt education for good. We're designing a school in the area, and our whole purpose is on the screen right here, and you can look at it online as well, but our whole purpose is threefold. We want to create humans a great character through education. We want to create change agents in our community through education. And we want students to master knowledge. And I'd like to talk to you about who we are, because we're coming to your community and I then have a proposition for the council to keep on your mind throughout the next hundred years while we're here. And so that's the mission of our school. And a little bit about my background on where I've been disrupting is in two thousand fourteen, I moved to a Muslim country, which in our day and age, when you hear about that from the Pacific Northwest going to a Muslim country, people look at me a little strange, like you're crazy. It's actually the second safest place in the world, safer than Liberty Lake. And I was able to live there in a Muslim country where they speak Arabic, and I designed two schools for the King and Queen. They got internationally recognized as doing some amazing things for students. I was then asked to come home. And I said, wow, what an honor to come home and to design a school for kids. That is research based. I'd like to share a UN you can find this online, but this is a United Nations research, one hundred and eighty-six pages to the world on how we need it's a requirement that education has to change for us to be successful moving forward. And this document, one hundred and eighty-six pages describes my school that is coming to the area. And that's a proud thing that I put in my, in my hat, that after twenty years of disrupting education and seeing what kids need and being able to have the autonomy to give kids what they need, that researchers put out an article in two thousand twenty-two to say, hey, world, listen, we have to change some things for our kids to be successful. And if you read it, it is Liberty Launch Academy that is now here in your backyard. So I want to, I want to put that out there. Just one picture as well. This is a picture from nineteen nineteen. And I graduated from CV in nineteen ninety-eight. And if you took a picture of nineteen ninety-eight and compared it to this picture, that's what happened for me. And that's what's happening today in traditional education. Now, I am not saying anything negative about individuals. I'm not saying anything negative about a public ed. I'm saying the structure that was built in the eighteen hundreds still exists today. And if we look at any any career around the world, innovation happens, changes happen. And it's time for education to change. So thank you for this podium for a couple more minutes to communicate who we are, and then I have an ask for you. We are not a seat time based organization. We are a competency based school. Kids do not need to sit in a seat for a set amount of time to earn credit and be labeled smart. What kids at Liberty Launch Academy need to do is demonstrate learning. When kids get older, their autonomy increases, and we allow that autonomy to take place. We ask kids questions on how they can make an impact in their world today and be a change agent today by using their math, science, English, history, empathy, their whole being and making their community better. We then can build curriculum around these high, high level questions, and kids can engage at that on that question at their level. So our ability to differentiate is way more profound than here's a textbook and everyone has to memorize this textbook. We ask open ended questions. How can we mitigate the negative effects of plastic? How can we do a community building event in Liberty Lake? How can we show empathy for kids that sleep on the, on the floor in our neighborhood? And then a second grader who hasn't necessarily built enough autonomy to understand that will get a little more handholding in our system. But if we had a senior at our school, which we will in five years, they can take that question, go find a researcher, go find a company, fundraise, do whatever they need to do within their curriculum, within their subjects, and they can answer that question, and we can assess them. Our whole idea is to then communicate that to the jobs, to the military, to the colleges, and say, here is who you're getting. They didn't just sit in a seat and get a checkbox and calculus. They didn't just sit in a seat and memorize some facts and regurgitate a teacher. These students did something with their life from an early age, and they are now ready for that next step in their life. As a council, it is, I think it's important to understand the data that's out there for future careers. And I want to share this, this graph with you. This is twenty twenty of employers around the nation and skills that they are seeking. They're seeking professional and work ethic. But when kids apply out of college, they're only seeing forty-six percent of those kids with those skills. They're not intentionally taught enough, and they're not assessed enough. And so that's what we want to do. We want to create a school that is nimble enough to adjust to what the world needs. Let me go back to competencies. So at our school, we will teach all of these subjects like you would see in a traditional school. We will teach English, we will teach science, we will teach math. What we do is because we're one entity and our teachers are talking together and collaborating together, kids will learn competencies for up to twelve years. They will have the same language on what successful reading critically looks like. They will have design process language from kindergarten all the way to senior. So they were hearing this iteration word over and over and over for twelve years. And when they graduate, they should, at that time, if they proceed down a design path career, mastered that because they have demonstrated design literacy and financial literacy and leading scientific investigations. Where the city council comes in, and what I think is important, and I have been talking to several, a couple of you as well, is we are looking for opportunities to build curriculum and to give our students an opportunity to give back to the community through their ability level. So one instance is there was a canceled bed race just recently. It was canceled, not enough participants. I'm an educator, and it just went education, education, education. So what I want to do is reach out to the Lions Club, and I already have. I've talked to Wendy. And I said, I see learning here for kids. I see impact. And so what I want to do is because I saw that in the community, is I can now design curriculum for my kids to learn about homelessness in the area, to learn about how many of their peers might be sleeping on the floor, to learn about how to design and build a bed, to learn about the history of beds, or whatever is needed in a kid's career or in a kid's education, we can now be nimble, because the question is, is how can I live today and give back today with my ability level at my, as a second grader or as a fourteen year old? And so my current plan is to now reach out to the public schools and to the community through Facebook and say, I will produce learning that you can do as a family, that you can do in your English classroom at Ridgeline if you want. And you can learn about homelessness, and I can provide that with tools and resources. So now the community can get in on this bed race, and I want to tie it to Halloween because the bed races are all costumes. And so now the kids will put on an event, and I hope here at Liberty Lake, where the community comes together and gives back to the most vulnerable in our community. And the kids will learn math. They will learn the design process. They will learn the history of our area. They will learn empathy. And we will create some of the best humans that I can imagine in this model. So that is what I'm asking the council today, is to keep us in mind that when you have a need, we might be able to meet it at a young, young age by empowering our citizens to do something today rather than waiting until after college. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thanks for coming. I really appreciate it. Good luck this fall. Okay, all right, we are on to reports and inquiries. City Council reports, is there any? Any reports, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, so on Saturday, I attended the active shooter training put on by Liberty Lake PD, Officers Marokin and Soul put that on, and it was actually very very practical information on, on both sides of things regarding the active shooter drill, so to speak, but then also just some practical first aid that they taught us on the second half. So I would put a challenge out to the, the city council members to sign up for that class the next time it comes around. I think they're hoping to run it at least once a month or every other month, so.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Solberg.
I had an opportunity to attend the most recent Winter Glow meeting. Or that'll be a fundraiser for light displays, I think it's going to be, and that will be going on in banquet type of a setting along with an auction on October twenty-second. And it will be at Darcy's. And if anyone's interested, Mr. Saba and I both have tickets, and we'll be happy to have you come and join us.
Great, we'll make sure we get that out on our city city channels as well. All right, Councilmember Cargill, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment about how impressed I was with the community's response to the hailstorm. I don't think that was anything that, at least in, in my time living here, which has been forty-two years now, I've never seen hail like that. And all of the damage that was done to a lot of homes and fences and all sorts of, of things. It really, I think, surprised a lot of people, and I just was very impressed by, by how much the community actually got out as soon as the storm passed and started cleaning up and and I just want to applaud the community for that. So thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, anybody else here in chambers? All right, not seeing any. Quick mayor report. Several chamber events over the last couple of weeks. I volunteered at the Valley Chamber, Greater Spokane Valley Chamber Golf Tournament last Thursday. Must have been a Thursday before. Time goes so fast around here. I've got to interact with a lot of our local businesses and just kind of encourage them to stay active in the chamber and active in our community. And we also had a really good government action committee meeting with the Valley Chamber. Senator Patton was there. We were talking about legislative priorities. And you know, it's not really something that we have done a lot of. Here at the city, obviously, we hired our lobbyist several years ago in conjunction with the school district, fire district with regards to getting the money for the overpass, but I think I think now's the time to put more structure behind our legislative priorities as a council and try to determine what, what those are each year, so we can get help from GSI and Valley Chamber and even AWC and our senators. Number one page, these are our priorities. And we did already, we have already talked about possibly getting a third lane on ninety back on the agenda from Barker to State Line. So those wheels are already greased and lots of support from everybody in the room when we were discussing that. So Mark and I need to, will catch up when he gets his feet on the ground a little bit more and figure out what that process might look like. GSI, we had a ADO meeting, nothing really relevant for us here during that meeting. Mark and Kyle and I and Anne Marie had an interesting presentation from a local company called Happleus. So I don't know if you guys remember the name Josh Aratola. He ran for state representative several years ago. But he is, he is a company, it basically is a virtual purchasing card that they have in place with Airway Heights and the Spokane, I think it was the Spokane Housing Authority, which could earn us a rebate back. So we are looking into that. Kyle and Mark are following up with their Airway Heights for some information, hoping for a conference call with them and then have them come in and do a presentation to council, because any new revenue, revenue source we can get is fantastic. And it's a, could be up to one percent rebate on anything we pay with using this virtual card, and there's no expense to us. And they make their money with the banks on the back end. So interesting concept. So I want you guys to hear that. Interesting meeting with the SRTC on transportation technology, and I guess I shouldn't say interesting, but it was more scary than anything else on how technology is quickly changing, how transportation works and I hold school, I want my hand on the wheel, my foot on that gas pedal, but yeah, things are changing quick. Hopefully, we, we won't be the guinea pigs over here. We've continued some lease discussions with regards to the Lake City Church Building. Things are moving along for the closing. And earlier today, Mark and I had the opportunity to go over to the PD and do the shooting simulator. I did not get to shoot anybody this year. I was kind of disappointed, but I didn't shoot someone I wasn't supposed to. So that was good. So I think that's all I've got for today. City Administrator Report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, public that are both here in the audience and, and online, it's great to be with you in person for the first time. And so my report this evening consists of three items and then some events and reminders of upcoming things that are going on in the community. First thing that I want to do is introduce David Williams, our city engineer, and he's going to update you on some ongoing road projects around the city. David?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, city council members. Thank you very much. City Administrator Mark, and then all the Liberty Lake citizens. I'm going to go over several points tonight, so I'm trying to make this as quick as possible, but there are several things happening in Liberty Lake that everybody knows about. So next slide, please. It might have already switched. So the first project here is the Signal Project at Country Vista Legacy Rich. I get a lot of phone calls about this. We do apologize. The polls have just not come in yet. We're waiting for the supply chain issue to be, you know, resolved, but at this time, the project is completely postponed. We're looking for delivery hopefully sometime in September, but we are just waiting for that, those polls. Next slide, please. This is the Kramer Bridge Project completion by spring of two thousand twenty-three. These are current pictures of what it looks like as of today. Actually, earlier today, I couldn't go out there. They were actually paving the roundabout. So the first layer of AC is actually on. I want to ask everyone, please do not drive through the construction zones. We actually had someone actually jump through that area in a Jeep, I believe it was, and just was a, could have been a pretty scary situation. So if you see the road close signs, please abide by those signs. The roadway, subgrade and curb are being poured. The M C walls and the bridge approaches are under construction. There's actually going to be several things that happen with the Primer Bridge Project, which I actually showed in the next slide. Next slide, please. Country Vista at Interstate ninety eastbound, that on-ramp is actually closed. It'll be closed from today all the way through to Friday. The on-ramp will be closed for the duration of this week to allow heavy truck traffic to enter I ninety. The Gerder Delivery, the Gerder Delivery Trucks will use this ramp as a staging area for Gerder Delivery Tuesday evening to Friday morning. So please, you know, use the other detours, go down Barker or also Liberty Lake as well. Next slide, please. So a lot of times when we can, in construction, we use language. A lot of times people don't know what we're talking about. So this is an illustration just as an example to show you what a Gerder actually is. You'll see these things lined up on the side of the road tonight, and they will be delivered in in several different stages over tonight, tomorrow, and then on Thursday. So the road closures will put this all up. This is all actually put up by David Garner on Facebook. The I-91 lane will be shut down tonight, the eastbound lane, slow lane. Then on Wednesday, Thursday, the fast lanes in both directions will be closed for the duration from seven PM to four AM. And then on Thursday, the fast lane on eastbound will be shut down as they line up the girders on that side of the road. So this is just an illustration, so you can look on, on social media to find out what these things actually are. I just want to make sure you guys know what they, what I'm talking about when I go through these, when I say these words. Next slide, please.
It already changed.
Okay, sorry. I don't know what the next slide is. Oh, there it is. Okay, here we go. And this again is an illustration of the Mission Roundabout closure. Again, we're asking you to abide by the, the detour which goes up Harvest over to Indiana. You can take Bitterroot or Harvard as well. So please abide by this. The roundabout area should be open by September ninth, here in about a month, or three weeks. Next slide, please. Is there a change again?
Yeah, this is the Kramer Rehab Project slide.
Okay, the Kramer Rehab Project, this one should show you that one that we've paved the first layer, you'll see curbs that have been poured. You also will note that the roundabout on Barker and Sprague, it actually is going to be opened, should be by, and alternatively, should be opened by next week, Monday, so August twentieth. The last section of curb and gutter are completed, several locations to complete the construction item. Baselift of asphalt completed at the north and south ends of Kramer. The surface asphalt layer to be paved will be done on August thirty-first. So we moved the data from September second to August thirty-first, so expect a full closure on Kramer. And you go to the next slide, please. And I'll kind of give you a little bit more info. As they're taking care of these base layers today, should have been the second portion of Kramer was poured. That's the south section, which is in between West Valley View and then down to Sprague. So the traffic control was closed there to allow for the paving. So now the base layer of all AC has been poured on Kramer. The last layer will be the August thirty-first pour. Again, this is the, the traffic control diagram for that pour that took place today. Next slide, please. So now this next slide is going to basically show you what the whole area will look like. We're asking all tenants, all residents along Kramer, sorry, along Legacy Ridge to please use the Legacy Ridge Country Vista exit to get out of the neighborhood August thirty-first because the entire roadway stretch will be closed for that last layer of paving. They'll be paving from the south end or the in towards Sprague and will be going north all the way up to, to Country Vista. So the whole roadway will be closed. And then the next operation will be the striping, which will take place on September seventh. Next slide, please. And I believe this slide that's coming up is the one that's going to show you the detour around Legacy Ridge and how to get in and out of the neighborhood. Again, we do the paving on August thirty-first. And then we do a little bit of the traffic control, striping. We're going to ask you, please, to make sure that you use Legacy Ridge Country Vista as the exit out. And again, the roundabout is tentatively scheduled to be opened on August twenty-second, which is the Monday. Okay, next slide, please. Coming close to the end here.
It changed. This is your speed limit.
Okay, the speed limit one, this one is just to make sure everybody knows what the speed limits actually are in the neighborhoods as you go through Country Vista. In the beginning, you'll see the red area, which is the forty-five mile per hour, the yellow is the twenty-five mile per hour. And then when you exit over near to the Home Depot, it's thirty-five miles per hour. This is actually illustrated on all the, on Country Vista eastbound and westbound. We just want to make sure that everyone knows what the illustration actually is and how it is that you, you should, you can be able to drive in that neighborhood through Country Vista. So twenty-five mile per hour through the construction zone, that's for the safety of both projects, the Kramer Bridge Project and then the Kramer Rehab Project. Next slide, please. And this slide should be just the basic caution slide. Please be aware that as these two projects have begun paving and these girders are set, we're asking you, please, to drive through these areas, especially Country Vista at the twenty-five mile per hour in the twenty-four mile per hour callout. And please allow yourself plenty of time to get to that area and please be safe. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, my email address and my phone number are right there. Thank you very much for allowing me this time.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, David. And, and David is going to be right back up. We've got a three-part update for you on, as Councilmember Cargill mentioned, the hailstorm that occurred last Thursday. Wanted to give you just a quick update on the damage to city property and the assessment of that. And David's going to start and then Trevor Reagan will come up and then Lieutenant Morgan will, will follow. So David, take it away.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to let you guys know, I'm still not used to this kind of biblical proportion hail that happened on Thursday. That kind of freaked me out. So I'm trying to keep my composure here, seeing, I know one individual that's inside of the council right now. He may recognize his car on here. So this hailstorm did happen. You can go to the next slide as well. The hailstorm did happen on Thursday and there was plenty of damage and like Councilmember Cargill also said that the county, the city and then the city staff, residents within the city, they really did step up to help repair different, different portions of the city, whether it be housing, cars. This helped each other out. It was really, really kind of cool to see that. And again, like I said, I'm not used to seeing this. What's that?
Neither are we.
Yeah, okay, good. People kept telling me this is normal. I'm like, this just can't be normal. So next slide, please. And you can go ahead and I want to introduce you to Trevor and then on to Lieutenant Darren as well. So Trevor, please take it away.
Thanks, David. Good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. And kind of along with what Councilmember Cargill and David stated, I think it's great that we have such a great community that can get together and support others during a, an event like this. And David, I've, I've lived in this area for thirty-one years and this is not normal. As Mayor Kaminsky stated, this is not a normal occurrence. But again, I, I just applaud the community for combining together to help others. Little report on city facilities, equipment during that. We obviously were not prepared as most citizens in the area, Otis Orchards, Demon Lake, we're not either. And then those south of us. We tried our best to be prepared for it when we saw it on the news. We, we actually got pretty lucky as far as city facilities. We did not really receive too, too much damage. We had a little bit of damage to some city operation and maintenance vehicles, nothing too drastic. So we did fare out pretty well. City staff did a great job coming in after the storm passed to do a drive throughout the roads, ensure that any trees that were down were removed. So that way, if there was an incident where emergency services had to come through, they had access. So I applaud our operations and maintenance staff for coming in once the storm passed, even though they did have, we had some staff that were in the line. Their personal homes were in that line of the storm. They chose to come in and step up and make sure that the city was taken care of. So I applaud them. But we, we did not really have any damage that was too drastic compared to some of the citizens in Liberty Lake. And then I'll let Lieutenant Morgan talk about the damage to some of the police cruisers.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the community. As you can see from a couple of the photos that we have, our vehicles didn't fare too well for just a couple of them. So, but all, all in all, we didn't do too bad. The only bad part was the vehicles that sustained the most damage just happened to be two of the newest vehicles, one of which was my own, unfortunately. And the other one was another $2,021 Dodge Charger that we had. The assessed damage to those vehicles, right off the top of my head, I think mine was eighty-eight hundred dollars worth of hail damage. And the other one was forty-six hundred dollars, which were going to be taken care of by CIAW. So they already got the claim. We should be getting that in the process and it should be done. Believe it or not, because Washington Auto Collision was, put us right up front and helped us out real quick. So they should be done by the end of the week and away. So. Yeah, and then they had, did have a couple of our older vehicles get damaged as well. That was in the parking lot. For the most part, it was just about location, though, wherever your vehicle was located during the time of the storm. And then where they got hit the hardest and Rocky Hill is Councilman Car, Car Hill can probably attest to, that Rocky Hill got hit pretty good. So that's about it for our city vehicles damage and our facility turned out well. So we didn't have too much damage there. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I, I'd like to say that when the initial report came in, as you all know, it, it looked to be much worse than I think these reports indicate that it was for, for city facilities, certainly. And so I just want to thank staff for responding the way they did and being able and willing to come in and do what they needed to do to protect property, help residents. And so just huge kudos and shout out to staff. Looked like there were some questions that were burgeoning. So I'd like to make sure that we provide an opportunity for that to occur if anybody has questions. Okay. We also had an event last Saturday, Barefoot in the Park. It's one of our larger events, one of the more popular ones that took place. And so Trevor Reagan again is going to provide a brief recap of that for City Council.
Thank you, Mark. So Barefoot in the Park happened first Saturday in August. It was great to have that event back since COVID. Had kind of a small combined event with Symphony this last year during September. But it was great to have Barefoot in the Park back. It was a great turnout. I'd like to give a, as much as he doesn't want me to, I don't know if he's on or not, but Dennis and I always kind of butcher his last name, but I think Coach, Coachella, Coachelli. He's part of Kiwanis. He does a great job of getting car show participants to come out to Barefoot in the Park. And I just want to mention that the biggest, the biggest comment that he heard from participants, and he's a part of car shows all over Spokane, Coeur d'Alene area. The biggest compliment that he gets from participants is that the event that we have now grown into a car show within Barefoot in the Park is that we have so much going on with the family activities, the concert, the food. It's a huge draw for those car show participants to come out and we hope to expand this as much as possible that the space can provide. We had a hundred and thirty-one cars this year. It's a little bit less than what we had last year when we combined with the Symphony. But Dennis wanted me to make a note that the funds, the donated funds were just the same as last year, even though we were about twenty cars short. The funds were the same that all go to Kiwanis for the Kiwanis scholarship fund that they do. So a big shout out to Dennis and then Kiwanis for supporting the city, helping us out, scheduling. It was a great event. We hope to just grow this and get back into the, get back to grow this even more and make it an even better event. Staff was a little rusty after not doing this event for a couple of years, but we figured it out kind of on the go, just as we do. And big shout out to all of our staff. Just as Jen would normally do, shout out to the staff that, that shows up on a weekend after they put in a full, full work, full week of work. They did an awesome job showing up and making sure that they were on the spot to help out with, with whatever may have happened. Thank you, Mayor. And Dan, I saw you guys and I apologize for any other council members if I did not see you. Acknowledging you here, I had to rush over to Orchard Park to try to take care of some splash pad issues we had that day to get that going. But thank you guys for showing up. It was a great event and we look forward to next year.
Thanks, Trevor. And the last item on my report is the list of events that are upcoming. And as you can see there, four of those are scheduled to occur this coming Saturday and Sunday. So we've got a full weekend of things coming up. And then the memorial concert in the park that you'll hear more about later this evening with an ordinance that we've got or a resolution that we've got. And then the moving wall, September fifteenth and nineteenth. And as we go, obviously, there'll be more things to add to this. But Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great, thanks. And just in looking at this, I will put a shout out for anybody who might be able to help out at the farmer's market this Saturday because I'm going to be going between the different events and the markets. So even if you can help out for an hour or so, I'll be there to start and get it set up. But if you can help out, just let me know. All right, that brings us to Liberty Lake Sewer Water District. I don't see anybody here. I'm trying to check my list here on Zoom. Do we have anybody here from Sewer Water District that I'm not seeing? I don't think so. All right, then that takes us to Sean Bouts, City Attorney, opioid settlement update.
Thanks, Mayor. Council, I'm sure you guys remember in April, we, you guys approved the memorandum of understanding, which was kind of the first step. And so things have kind of progressed over the summer and there's kind of been a flurry of things as they try to finalize the settlement with the Attorney General's Office. So I kind of, they had a webinar last week and gave some more information and there's some more documentation that will need to be approved by the council with regard to distributions and what's happening. It's still a very fluid process. But it looks like there's some, there's a deadline of September twenty-third for jurisdictions to get documents approved. So I'll be getting those to you. One of them is just a simple form and a couple of pages, but the other one's rather lengthy and includes a number of documents that I just received that it's a hundred plus pages. So I haven't had a chance to review it in detail, but just some of the highlights. So the, the settlement is between the state and three opioid distributors. It's going to pay a total of five hundred and eighteen million. That money needs to be used to address opioid epidemic. Cannot be put into general funds and as part of that, the way they broke it down is this state and local governments have agreed to a fifty-fifty split of four hundred and thirty million dollars. So two hundred and fifteen million dollars each. The difference between the five eighteen and the four thirty has to do with costs and attorney fees to the Attorney General's Office and other attorney fees. So there is a requirement that all thirty-seven cities and counties that filed a lawsuit against the distributors have to agree to the settlement. In addition, ninety percent of the cities and towns in Washington with a population over ten thousand that did not participate in the lawsuit also have to agree to the settlement. The settlement involves, it's very similar to the national agreement that has gone on around the country with other states and local governments. That agreement will be incorporated into the Washington Agreement. And will have certain requirements under that as well relative to the Washington Agreement. If not enough local governments joined by the September twenty-third date, the settlement's void. And there will be no payments of any money. As of August eighth, there's only seventeen out of a hundred and twenty-five eligible local governments that have returned the participation form. That, that seems like a low number, but I'm not surprised by that at all. I would imagine in the course of the next month, that number's going to increase rapidly as we get closer to the deadline. Especially since this, what's called an allocation agreement, the larger agreement I mentioned was just provided late last week. So from that standpoint, many of the jurisdictions haven't even had a chance to review it. So it's not surprising that that number's low. From the standpoint of what, I know the big question is, well, what does that mean for Liberty Lake? So there, there, if you recall, I don't know if you saw it or not, but in the previous memorandum of understanding, there was an exhibit that showed a percentage for Liberty Lake. That percentage is multiplied by two hundred and fifteen million dollars. And that will be the amount apportioned for Liberty Lake. It's based upon your population and the proportionate share of the epidemic within your city, within your jurisdiction. So based upon my math, and the percentage for everybody was point zero three eight nine six three six five one nine percent. So if you multiply that by two hundred and fifteen million dollars, it's a little less than eighty-four thousand dollars is what it is. Part of the MOU also requires the establishment of what's called, the acronym is OAC, and it's an opioid abatement council that oversees the allocation, distribution and spending of the money. And that the settlement funds will be spent on items that are approved use under the settlement in fighting the epidemic. Assuming everything is approved on this, on the twenty-third of September for the jurisdictions, it will then go back to the courts for final approval. With the idea that the first payment would be made on With the idea that the first payment would be made on December first, twenty twenty-two. Um, the intent is to be paid over the course of seventeen years. Um, the first payment uh was each succeeding year, so sixteen years being paid in July, July fifteenth of every year. The intent right now is that the first payment in December would be um approximately double of what the payments would be each succeeding year. Um, they won't be exactly the same is my understanding each July, but they'll be fairly close. Um, there's some different um incentives and other portions of the settlement agreement that will vary the amount, but they expect them to be fairly fairly similar. And I think, Mayor, I don't know if you have anything to add as well. Um, I know we had talked a little bit. I think the, our, the intent is to either have the agreement for the sixth or the twentieth. Um, I think probably initially a sixth unless the, the council has some questions beforehand and and wanted to talk further in a workshop on the sixth and then move um to approve it then or um wait until the twentieth. To uh, you know, take a look at it, you know, depending on the, on the timing of it. So at that point, I don't have anything else unless anybody else has any questions.
So can um any of our allotment go to businesses that are making money from their treatment as opposed to a nonprofit, for instance, Greater Spokane Substance Abuse Council?
Yeah, there's a, I, I don't know the answer, answer that directly at this point. Um, there are a number of approved uses that is part of the agreement that says these are the things that you can use it for. I don't know offhand if that's one of them or not. Um, but we'll be able to know that and that's part of what the OAC that um council has put together to, you know, approve and determine whether the allocation can do that or not. Um, there's some discussion right now, and if you recall from the MOU, um, it's broken up into what I'll call regions and Liberty Lake is part of the Spokane region and that Spokane County, Ferry County, Stevens County, Adams County and 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 a few others. Um, and so that's where that council portion comes into play um in making that determination. And so there's some discussion right now of a potential interlocal agreement amongst the jurisdictions that qualify um and looking on how that goes because you can do it locally or you can do it regionally, but if you do it locally, you gotta go through the same steps and creating that committee and going through that process, or you can do it regionally based upon what your region is. So right now, that agreement doesn't have to be passed by the twenty-third. Um, the intent probably at this point is before the distributions come out in December. So in between, assuming that the approval comes and there are enough jurisdictions, it would say, okay, everyone signed off. We've got approval. Now we can work towards deciding what that OAC looks like and whether it's locally, regionally in that aspect. And then if it wants to be regionally for Liberty Lake, then that agreement would come back for the council, you know, prior to that date.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? I guess my question to the group, you know, obviously it's pretty straightforward. There's nothing to negotiate. It's we either approve it or we don't. Um, so my thought was we bring it back um on the sixth. Um, and then if there's questions at that point, we always have the, the opportunity to move it out to the twentieth. Um, but that way we can get it in front of you guys for approval. Um, and if for some reason there's concern or questions that still need to be answered, we, we can always move it to the next meeting. So if that's okay with you guys, we'll plan on that.
Just, just uh to clarify, so we're talking about eighty-four thousand spread out over seventeen years, so about five thousand a year.
Yeah, yeah, you have to spark for my new committee to figure that out.
But keep in mind that, you know, the numbers are much bigger. You know, like Spokane County, you know, it's a much larger number percentage and see if Spokane and whatnot. So from the standpoint of if you're looking at countywide or the number of counties that are part of that region, it's a much larger number.
Got it. All right. Thanks, John, for that update. Okay, we are up to workshop discussion, funding for a library, public works yard, trailhead water line. Um, so Kyle, you're up.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Todd, uh, for getting this up. And so at our special council meeting last Tuesday, um, council um approved the purchase of the proposed library building and uh one and a half million dollars for ARPA funds towards the purchase of that building. And so I wanted to bring back these last three remaining items down at the bottom right handier screen here uh to try to find a home for them so that I can bring back a subsequent budget amendment to account uh for these expenditures prior to the end of the year. And so uh what we have left re- remaining for, for council to um to decide on is the remaining purchase of the library building totaling six hundred and seventy-five thousand, the trailhead water line that was uh uh that was approved back, I believe in the spring and then Public Works Building Assistance getting us to the finish line for that contract that uh that has already been approved for the uh construction uh the Public Works Building. And so um we had a basically a, a a version of what you see in front of you at the council meeting last Tuesday. And so I, I just really want to have the continuation essentially uh from council on where we think an appropriate landing spot is for, for these items. Um, now knowing that we have, you know, about a million left in ARPA, um, and you know, our current balance is about four point nine million in the general fund. We anticipate that that's going to be closer to seven million by the end of the year, once we get our lift reimbursements back. And then over on the left-hand side, you can see kind of our balance sheet with our real estate excise tax funds, one and two, and where we see those uh kind of over the course of the next year and a half. So um with that, uh I, I, I suppose I would just entertain any questions or uh have council start the, the, the discussion on where they would like to see um, these remaining projects be funded from.
Don't everybody jump at once. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kyle, quick question. Do all of these have to be twenty twenty-two items? Are any of them the possibility of being twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Cargill. Public Works Building is going to be constructed. Um uh, it's going to start construction in twenty twenty-two, will not finish until twenty twenty-three. And so you can see the library purchase that will be uh twenty twenty-two expense, trailhead water line. Uh, from my understanding, uh, will be a twenty twenty-two expense. Finishing up the Public Works Building, uh, I, I would envision, uh, so it, we need to account for it in twenty twenty-two, but probably not actually expend these funds until twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dunn.
In considering the Public Works Building Assistance component of the expense, um personally, I believe this lean, I'm leaning toward the ARPA fund basis for it. Uh, specifically as it relates to a twenty twenty-two or twenty-three based expense. And further as a capital project, a one-time, I'd say, uh, hit for uh the consideration of the city. So as considering the three as component, I lean towards the um ARPA source for the Public Works Building.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Sure, I'll jump in. Uh, yeah, I totally uh agree with the Councilmember Dunn on that. Um, I, I, I guess uh, as I look at the remaining projects that we need to, to decide how to pay for it. The, the water line, the public works building, the remainder of the library, those are all one-time hits for us as a city. So I'm almost inclined just to say, let's exhaust the ARP funds and take the balance from the REIT. However, that needs to shake out, just a thought.
That's true. I, I know, uh, customer cargo has his hand, but I just want to make sure anybody else, Councilmember Spencer.
I'll jump in real quick. Um, I, I agree, I agree with the idea of uh using up the ARPA funds. I, I would tend to, again, my understanding was that uh Public Works Building was going to be taken out of general fund. So I, I would say, let's uh, let's uh finish up ARPA and have the remainder come out of general funds.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz, were there any additional outstanding asks um about ARPA? That anybody can remind me about? Um, I believe um there, there's been requests for, to revisit our nonprofits that were, that benefited um for the, from the twenty twenty review for twenty twenty-one. Um, Kyle, remind me, that was what, about two hundred and seventy in twenty twenty? So obviously twenty twenty-one would be less.
Right. Yep, that is correct. And then you have your ask that is kind of there in the ether from um Liberty Lake Sewer Water District. Um, those are the only two I think there were specific that I can, that I can recall at this time.
And at what point, how soon do you need this decision? Because I know we're in workshop right now. What, when are you looking for a decision to be made on these?
Uh, so we're going to close within the next month on the library purchase. And so I, I would like direction on, on these, because what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring back a budget amendment uh to account for these and a few other items. Uh, hopefully on September sixth, if that isn't the case, we bring it back for the twentieth. But the goal would be to allocate these at the workshop tonight for me to bring back the budget amendment on September sixth uh for council review and, and uh approval.
Okay, I know, Councilmember Cargo, oh, sorry, we'll go back to Councilmember Salberg and then back to Councilmember Cargo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just briefly, um, I agree that we should exhaust the funds um for about three hundred thousand dollars that we should uh earmark for nonprofits as we have in the past. That can come out of the general fund too, I'm, I'm sure, but um, I would prefer doing that. And then I thought that we had a pretty solid guideline as to how the funding was going to be done for the library. And so the issue would be the remainder um pretty much for the Public Works Building. So I think we should be using REIT and the um the general fund.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Cargo, back to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a follow-up question, Kyle. Um, on the things that aren't going to be due until twenty twenty-three, I'm trying to figure out the math here real quick. I'm just wondering if there's any advantage to keeping some of the ARPA funds in a bank account so that it it earns a little bit for the city as opposed to allocating it now. Is, is that, am I overthinking it?
Um, just a little bit. I, I, I like the, the, I like where you're going with that, but we earn interest on all of our balances. The IP. And so whether it's coming from general fund or REIT, we any excess that we don't need absolutely liquid automatically goes into our LGIP investment uh pot and is earning interest at the same rate that the ARPA would.
Okay, that's what I was wanting. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right. So unless there's any more comments, let me just circle back here. So funding for the library was really decided and discussed at the last meeting. It was one point five from ARPA and the balance from general fund, correct?
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thought maybe I had forgotten something there. Okay, so then we, so then let's take these um just separately. So Public Works Yard. Um, why don't we just go ahead and is there a motion in a second for how to um, how to spread out the cost of the public work shard? Anybody jump in? Councilmember Spencer?
I move, we uh take five hundred thousand from ARPA to put towards the Public Works Building, Building Assistance.
And the balance from general.
Uh, yeah, I thought that was.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it'll be the total.
Yeah, just want to make sure. Okay, um, so the, the motion is to take um five hundred thousand dollars from the ERP funds for the public workshop yard. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Salberg.
We're doing this on her.
Um, I don't know.
It looks like.
Okay.
Can you restate the motion?
Yes, so the motion was to, for the public work shard to take, to use five hundred thousand dollars out of the ARPA funds. And with the second from Councilmember Salberg, well, we'll let Kelsey get on here. You know, we're, we're trying to juggle between Zoom and uh the uh Granicus program here. Yes. And this, and this is for the public work shared. All right, any discussion?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fuller, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, I, I guess I just want to revisit the cost of the public work yard. Um, I believe it was Kyle, help me out here, two point.
Two point three million.
Right, and our original budget was how much?
Uh, so our original budget was, I believe, one point three.
Thank you.
Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, so I believe it, yeah, it was one point three. And then, yeah, once our bids came back, obviously that that's what you see now, so.
Correct. So that's what I remembered as well. And I, at a previous council meeting, I thought we had discussed using the RP funds to help offset that overage. Complete is what I thought I heard, but I could have been wrong.
So the notes that I had were we approved the contract with the understanding that we would eventually allocate the funds. And so.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that we ever decided how much of the RP funds.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But what, I'll just share what I left, what I left the meeting with was we were going to use a million dollars of the RP funds towards the Public Works Building.
Okay.
That was my impression. Not that we voted on it, don't get me wrong, but that's part of our discussion right now on this motion. So for me, I'd like to see us at least get closer to that, but I'd like to hear from the other council members as well.
Councilmember Spencer.
I'd be willing to a, a amend the motion to, to take the full uh one million. I, I don't think it's quite one million. I think uh Kyle was rounding up, but I don't think we have quite one million left there.
Nine hundred and eighty thousand to be exact. And so I would, I would exhaust that as directed.
And I only bring it up because I want to stick to my guns on, I want to check that box. It's for the majority.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that, so are you?
I would be willing to amend that if, if that's.
Well, let's, let's finish, let's get some more
Yeah, exactly.
comments before we do that. So any, any further comments? Councilmember Kurtz.
I think mine is a question that's not specific to what Councilmember Spencer was, the, the track key is just on there, but so if I heard correctly, the, the items that we're still talking about funding from ARPA are the trailhead water line and the public works building because we agreed that the six seventy-five for the building purchases coming out of REIT, is that accurate? Am I?
It was, so it was going to be some combination of general fund and REIT is how we left it last Tuesday.
But the, the two items we're looking at still funding out of the ARP are those bottom two items.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I think my comment is that I, I would, I would like to look at exhausting the um, the funds. Um, I do still want to maybe hold something back um akin to what Councilmember Salberg was saying about some of our nonprofits. But I would support getting the Public Works Building knocked out.
Any other?
Can I follow up on that then?
Um, make sure I don't have anybody else comment. Councilmember Dunn.
I'm just interested in uh considering amended motion.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, I just want to speak to that a little bit. Um, so with, and with what you just said, that basically would mean we would use the balance, the remaining funds from ARPA to help pay the difference on the Public Works Building. I mean, am I under, am I hearing?
Is that what you said?
Yes.
But you also said to hold some back for the nonprofits.
Right.
Well, if there's a million nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, did I hear that? Nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that leaves four hundred thousand dollars left that's not accounted for if we fully funded the Public Works Building. Am I reading this correctly?
So yeah, I'll paint the picture for, for council as well. So let's remove the six hundred and seventy-five thousand uh for the remaining library purchase and allocate that to general fund as I had heard earlier. Uh, if we fund both the trailhead water line and the public works billing, uh, the remainder of the public works billing to ARPA, we would be left with three hundred and five thousand.
Or?
Or, yeah.
Or I think what I was saying was fully funding the public work shard and not addressing the trailhead water line with ARPA.
So we have all kinds of, we, we have several different options out here. So we are, the motion on the floor actually is for the five hundred thousand dollars for the public work shard out of ARPA. Um, the original mover, is that what we call you, the mover? Um, would like to make a, to amend his own motion. We can just let him do that.
Okay, yeah.
And then resecond.
So uh, so I moved to amend the original uh motion to take nine hundred and eighty thousand from ARPA and apply it towards the Public Works Building Assistance.
Okay, we have a second to that. All right, now that would leave, that would leave us with zero in ARPA, correct?
Uh, so now that would leave us with four hundred and eighty thousand. So if.
Something missing in here on, on my side, but you're the, you're the numbers guy.
So right now, yeah, so uh right now with the one point five million that we allocated last Tuesday, we have nine hundred and eighty thousand left in ARPA. So we can fund uh the Public Works Building, we can fund Trailhead, we can fund a portion of the remainder of the library purchase, all with ARPA. It's just how council wants to split that out and we can, we can take chunks. And so we can take the six hundred and seventy-five for the remaining library purchase, the first item down in the bottom right hand corner.
Kyle, Kyle, do you mind? I hate interrupting you, but so I'm going to circle back. So what you just said is that we have nine hundred, we have nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in ARPA.
Yeah.
The, the amended motion is to spend nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of ARPA for the public works building. So that leaves us with zero.
So the public works building is only go, so we already have the funding mechanism to fund the public works building. We're only looking for an additional five hundred thousand.
But the, the count, the, the discussion that I'm hearing from some of the council members is to increase what we're in, go over five hundred thousand dollars out of ARPA for the public works building, which will reduce what looks like it's coming out of REIT two. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
That's what I heard.
Okay, so that would, so, okay, so the motion on the floor, and it sounds like we had a second from Councilmember Kurtz, is to take the remainder of the ARPA funds, which is nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars and put it to the public works yard. So that's the motion on the floor. If there's no more discussion, Chris, I did see your hand up. I apologize, Councilmember Cargill, before we go to vote.
Yeah, I was just trying to get clarification on what you just said, so thank you.
No, no problem. All right. So all in favor of taking the nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of ARPA to pay for a part of the public work yard, please raise your hand, say aye, and also use your, your voting button there.
Aye.
Okay. And as Councilmember Cargill, I'm assuming you're a nay, so I'll, I'll you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm an aye.
Okay.
But I do, I do want to come back to this discussion if, before we're done.
Okay, just a second. We got one, two, three, four, five. We're missing somebody.
Me. There you go, sorry.
Okay, so it looks, um, like the vote is unanimous to take the nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of ARPA to fund, um, part of the public work yard, which then would reduce, um, the two point three that is currently planned to come out of REIT two.
Excellent.
Okay, and, uh, we'll go, Councilmember Cargill, we're quick, and then back to Councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I was just trying to clarify then, Kyle, just doing the quick math here that that would increase our ending balance on REIT two for twenty twenty-two to about six fifty, is that right?
Yes, yes. So a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz? And then that would leave our ARPA balance at three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, is that correct?
No, that's what.
Balance is zero.
That, that just took it to zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can someone tell me what the bottom line is for the the Trailhead expense? I can't figure it out on here.
Um, it's all, well, which the total project cost?
For the water line.
Oh, for the water line.
Um, one seventy-five.
So on that note, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to pay for the Trailhead Waterline of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of the general fund.
Okay.
Second.
We have motion in a second to pay for the Trailhead Waterline out of the general fund. Um, any discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand. Looks like we have an aye from Councilmember Cargill as well. Thank you. And it's coming up here, your little vote buttons. A minute. That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Okay, all right. So let's, let's do that again real quick, just for the record, those in favor of, um, funding the Trailhead Waterline with general fund dollars, please say aye. Or raise your hand. Okay, I've got six out of six. Thank you. And Kyle, these will come back in a budget amendment, like you said, around, maybe on the nine, six meeting?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh, I see Councilmember Cargill's hand back up. Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. So Kyle, can you remind me, maybe I missed it. When do we need to decide on the six seventy-five for the library?
Uh, so, um, my understanding is that is coming from general fund as I was told a little bit ago.
That's what the discussion was last week.
Last week.
Yeah.
And that's what I would prepare. I, so I would, uh, account for those funds from general fund dollars, uh, when I come back for the budget amendment.
So this would be general fund dollars for twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, sometime in the next twenty days, probably.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor Protim, you're on.
I'm good. Kelsey, you ready over there? What happens if I haven't hit the motion button before I say it? Okay. I still want to get cut off my motions. All right, uh, uh, please, uh, refer to, uh, general business ten. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda item, general business items, ten, A, B, and C. Um, city council meeting minutes from August second, special meeting minutes from August ninth, and vouchers from August sixteenth uh, with the manual wire on August tenth, in the amount of nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and four pennies.
We have a second. Second, by Councilmember Dunn. All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Three. All right, it looks like I've got six out of six, motion passes. Right, general business.
Well, I guess, okay.
I'll be trying to.
Yeah. I was just getting, just since we're still going back and forth. You sure? I've got the notes down on this one.
Mayor?
Nope, yes.
Yeah, just a quick question. On, on that last motion, was, was that approving the minutes from those special meetings? I, I just wanted, I, I should have brought this up, but, uh, on the special meeting, August ninth, page thirteen, that listed, um, it listed Van Orman as, as dissenting on the, the vote regarding the uh, the ARPA funds for the library. So I don't know if that needs to be cleared up or.
Oh, what, I can't remember, did she or did she not?
Uh, it, it listed Van Orman as opposed to Cargill. Cargill was the other dissenter.
Okay, so Sean, we've, we've already voted. How do we go back in? So that's.
Yeah, so, um, correct, you can correct the minutes and then go back and vote relative to the corrected minutes where they are. So could bring those back now or next meeting. Um, you could do either or. I mean, you can do, but you can go ahead and say, so you, whoever made the motion for, who made the motion originally?
Oh, yeah.
Phil, so you could, anybody could for that matter, because you vote, you could say, you could bring the motion back to vote on it, have a second, bring it back to amended, do an amended motion, and then vote on it with a correction. You can do it that way.
Can Jed just do an amendment right now?
Well, it's already been, it's already been approved. So, um, you can, you can bring it back the next meeting with the corrected amount, do the same thing, or you could do it now. So you basically say whoever, whoever voted for it gets to vote to bring it back. So that's second. And then you do that vote, then you would do an amended motion for the correction. Vote on the amendment, and then you would vote on approval of it with the amendment. Okay, I'll make a motion to bring the previous motion of the consent agenda back for reconsideration.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. Second by Councilmember Dunn. All in favor of bringing general business consent agenda back? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say that's six out of six. All right.
And then, then you need a amended motion with regard to the special meetings to change dissent, sending vote from Councilmember Van Orman to Councilmember Cargill.
That's correct.
Uh, Mayor, I, uh, move that item ten B, the general business, we amend to reflect Cargill as a dissenter in the vote.
Okay, we have a second, second. Second from Councilmember Kurtz. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, it looks like I've got six out of six. All right.
And now, so now we want a motion to approve the consent agenda with amendments as previously voted upon.
Second.
Okay, you may, you may, I have a second. Councilmember, uh, Salberg over there. All right, all in favor of the amended, meant special meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, success six. Boy, I think that's the first time we've, we've ever had to do that.
Sorry about that.
So just, and, and, and well, and these are things that we always, I always forget to share with, with newer council members. So, um, meeting, the draft meeting minutes do come out before the meeting. So if you notice something before the meeting, um, send a note to Kelsey. Um, in this case to Kyle in the next couple of weeks while Kelsey's off on her adventure. Um, and then that way there will be corrected when we have, for the meeting. No, that's okay. I always forget to mention that. Okay, all right.
Moving along?
Yes.
All right, Mayor, thank you. Uh, general business eleven A, make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city and Greenstone Foundation for the Spokane Symphony.
Second. We have second by Councilmember Salberg. Any discussion? Questions? I think pretty much basically the same thing as last year, who had Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, I just reflect on this as a great investment. Thanks.
Right, not seeing any other hands, all in favor of approving the agreement between the city and Greenstone for the Spokane Symphony, please say aye.
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 Okay, it looks like I've got six out of six. All right, we're going right on.
Sorry, Kelsey, I was late on the motion button over there. All right.
All right, we have, uh, time for council comments. If anybody's got anything on their mind, um, aside from future uh, agenda items, because we will discuss that later. Councilmember Salberg?
Just one thing.
Yeah.
We went by early, um, after a meeting this morning, um, by the Orchard Park pickleball, uh, players. There were only a few that were out there at that time. There is a significant damage being done by skaters and, um, motorized scooters on those courts and, and we put a lot of money into that. My suggestion would be that we put signs up and then it would be a code enforcement. I don't want Derek having to go out there, well, unless he wants to take the golf cart out. But it, it appears that it's been a problem for the pickleball player safety wise too, because the kids will come flying through while they're playing, so.
Okay, thanks for, for pointing that out. Um, yeah, those are just brand new resurfaced. So we will take a note on that and see what we can do. Thank you for that. And, um, I will ask real quick, uh, the council members, since everybody's kind of now spread out, um, around the, um, around town. Um, I'm trying to collect a list of those streets that might be candidates for our, um, speed limit sign with the white flashy um, lights around them, just to grab people's attention. We've got one on Country Vista. Um, I had a couple of community members come up to me, uh, on Saturday, they live in Linda Blad, which is like they, they, and the, the last two streets in Liberty Lake, and it's not so much problem with people speeding coming up the hill. It's people coming from like the Relate County Park, because there's not a speed limit sign very close to there at all. So they, they, they're not that expensive. So if there are, there are areas where you are that you know of, uh, a collector street or a problem street, um, let's get them on the list for next year.
You want us to get those to David?
Um, yeah, and, and it's just copy me because I'm, I'm trying to keep a list as well. Um, okay, we are up to public hearings and appeals. We don't have, yes, sorry.
No, uh, thank you very much. Uh, I was just.
You hit the mute button on accident, Chris.
I apologize. Um, I wanted to bring up something that, uh, I, uh, asked you about this weekend as well, and per Sam's, um, presentation tonight, I know there's, uh, several kids, uh, that are going to be walking from the Rocky Hill neighborhood to the new school over, um, off of, um, Mission and Multer, um, in the old Meadowwood, or in the Meadowwood Technology Complex area. Um, there's a, a section of that road that's owned by Huntwood. Um, or that property, I should say, that's owned by Huntwood, that is not, there's no path or trail or anything for those kids to get through. And it's a safety issue, because if that's not done, then they're going to be crossing Mission and going to the other side and then recrossing Mission again. And so, um, I'm hoping we can consider trying to do something or working with Huntwood to try to do something. I don't, I'm not sure, maybe Lisa can answer that question about, um, uh, who would have to do what, when. Um, but I just, I do know a couple of, of parents have asked me about, uh, about that particular issue.
Right, thanks for bringing that up. I hadn't had a chance to get with Lisa on that. So Lisa, I know you're remote, um, and, um, if memory serves me, Huntwood, it won't be required to make those front engine improvements until and unless they, they do some improvements at that parcel, but what are our options?
So, um, one option may be to approach Huntwood. We, right now, the, the area where the sidewalk, we, we do have the right of way to, uh, to I believe, uh, put in the sidewalks. I can, I can verify that um, uh, in the morning, uh, but I do believe that we, we have the right of way. So we may, um, if we do not, it, there may be a possibility that they would be willing to dedicate it and we could, um, create a capital project to do the sidewalk. We cannot do the sidewalk unless we have at very least an easement. Um, and so, so, um, I can do a little bit of research and it could be something that we could try and get into a capital facilities plan. I do not have funding for that for this year unless, um, council was to make a budget amendment.
Yeah. And, and Lisa, I know, obviously, we, we, we work with Greenstone on the north side of Mission in the River District, um, for that, um, ground um, ass, the, the asphalt grindings that were, were tamped down, um, for the kids to get from bitter route um, towards Selkirk. I don't know if that would be an option. Um, in, in my, I guess, my follow up question would be, um, if that is our right of way, then that would land in the city's lap and not Huntwood, correct? Or would they eventually do that?
No, that would be, it would be their responsibility at the time that they, uh, that they, uh, developed that property.
But if it's.
I'm sorry?
But if it's before they do that, anything with that property, it's on us.
That would, that, that is correct.
That's what I thought. But we'll follow up, Councilmember Cargill? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, um, resolutions, we have resolution twenty-two dash three, three, three.
Some motion from me.
Kelsey's first, yeah.
So we have resolution number twenty-two dash, um, two thirty-three. Resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, approving the final plat of Hawkstone third addition located in a portion of the south half of the northeast quarter of section eleven. Township twenty-five N range forty-five EWM, Liberty Lake, Washington, file P dash zero six dash zero 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 two C.
There, I'll make a motion at this time to, uh, approve resolution number twenty-two dash two three, two three, three, uh, related to the Hawkstone third edition final plat.
Great, thanks. We have a second.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Spencer. All right, um, Lisa, I don't know if you want to, want to go through any of this, or you just want to see if we, there's questions first.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to answer any questions anyone may have.
All right, let's open the floor to council questions. Going once. Looking twice, I don't see any. All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead, not seeing, hearing any questions or comments. Those in favor of approving resolution twenty-two dash two three, three? Um, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, it looks like that, I got six out of six. Kelsey, do we want to, uh, try? Okay, I'm keeping track.
Have we abandoned the other? For now.
Um, ordinances, first read.
Ordinance number two eighty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, relating to contracting indebtedness, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed seven million aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series to provide funds to finance a portion of the city's Trailhead Golf Course Building and Parking Improvement Project and other capital improvements, and to pay the costs of issuance of the bonds. Fixing or setting parameters with respect to certain terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds and providing for other related matters.
Okay, so this is first read, so there won't be a vote, but we do have representatives here. Um, Kyle, if you want to do, um, a little intro, and then, um, if there's any questions, um, from our guests, for our guests, we can go there.
Thanks, Mayor. So yeah, on the call, we have Scott Bauer and Ryan Neumeister from Northwest Municipal Advisors, as well as Stacy Yamazaki from Foster Garvey, uh, on hand, and they have obviously assisted in the preparation of these documents that sets the stage for our discussion on September sixth, once, uh, Baton and Architects West and OIC bring back the GMP for council's final consideration. So if you have any questions on the document or the prep or how we go forward, uh, we would entertain those now.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just have one question, and I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it anyways. I was looking specifically for any prepayment language, and it sounds to me, the only part that I saw that pertained to that has to do with the whoever is awarded the bond and it'll come in their contract, is that correct?
That is correct, and so uh, we're gonna put out an RFP for uh, private placement services and we'll bring that information back, and that will all be outlined in the responses that we receive from those.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Not seeing any more questions. It was an easy night for you guys. All right, so we will see this come back for a second read at the next meeting on September sixth. Okay. Thanks for joining us. Uh, all right, so no emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Should have a copy at your desk here. Um, so September sixth, we've got the Trailhead Workshop at six. Um, tentatively have financial policy updates. Uh, Councilmember Cargill, you had asked about um, a workshop on budget um, feedback with community engagement. They have their meeting tomorrow night, so that's on their agenda tomorrow, so we we will, are planning to follow up with that on the sixth, and then um, it didn't sound like you guys had really had any questions on the opioid thing, so we can probably skip the workshop on that and just go right to the action item. If there's any questions at that time, so we can take that opioid um, workshop off there, Kelsey. And then um, TBD, we've got Capital Facilities Plan Quarterly Budget Update. Um, and then Budget Workshop, and then some other ones that we've just been kind of pushing down the road here. So is there any, any other future workshops that you guys are thinking of that we should put on here and start trying to add to the calendar? Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, I had a question on the Code of Ethics and Social Media um, policy. I'm just wondering um, if um, David will be ready to maybe give an update on that, maybe at one of the next meetings.
Um, that's more, it's more in my hands than his so far, um, now that Mark's here, um, I'm gonna be able to circle back to that and David all me, and I'll meet on, so maybe second meeting in October possibly, because we've got a lot of other things coming up with the budget. We will put that on there as tentative for the second meeting. Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, um, so with that, we will go to um, citizen comments again. Uh, doesn't look unless we, our one guest has any comments here for the public. Okay, um, so we don't have any um, additional citizen comments from the gallery here, but if there's anybody visiting online who would like to make a citizen comment, I'm looking through. I only see a couple um, who are not actively engaged on this side of the meeting, so um, if you do wanna make a comment, if you can send a note to Todd in the chat real quick, and we'll have you um, have you step up for your three minutes. Anything, Todd? Nope, okay, all right, so next we have, um, we had added a short executive session um, to our meeting um, with regards to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten-one-C. Um, and so we're going to go ahead on this side adjourned to the small conference room, Councilmember Cargill, we will call you. Um, is that, shall I use the number that you and I were texting with earlier? Okay, so give us about five minutes to get regrouped in there. We need about, let's say, ten minutes. Um, it's just a a quick info, really, um, and then we'll come back, so we will start that at and then come back at eight fifty. So, thanks for hanging in, everybody. Okay, I think we actually have about a minute and twenty seconds left before we um, can actually officially be back, so.
We're always having a circle, right?
But remember, we're we're on. Right, so we will, uh, once, once we're officially officially back here in fifty-four seconds counting, um, we're just gonna go ahead and adjourn. So, shameful forty-five seconds left. Yeah, David and Kyle, if you wanna, wanna drop, you can, we're waiting till eight fifty to officially adjourn. Craig's in it till the end. And we'll see who's gonna win the computer or Verizon. Okay, is it close enough to eight fifty? Anybody opposed to adjourning? All right, not not hearing any, we're adjourned. All right, see you guys. Thanks for sticking it out, Craig.
Thank you, appreciate it.